I now call the Huntsville City Council Meeting to order. If all that would like to or unable to, please rise for the invocation led by Kelly McCauley, followed by the Pledge Allegiance led by the Chair.
Dear beloved, when the ancients considered the values that were appropriate and necessary for the good governance of a peaceful, productive society, they brought to our minds the virtues of wisdom, courage, justice, and moderation. These values have stood the test of time. In more recent days, an American style of governance has led to approbation for newer, enlightened values. We celebrate diversity, we enjoy protections of our freedoms in a constitutional republic, and we dearly value egalitarianism, equal protection of the law. So now let us commence the affairs that are presented to our community. Let doubt and skepticism and inquiry be on our lookout when caution is the appropriate course, but also let innovation and boldness take point when opportunities for excellence appear on our horizon. In this solemn discourse, let's remember Jefferson's words, "That truth is great and will prevail if left to herself, that she is the proper and sufficient antagonist to error and has nothing to fear from the conflict unless by human interposition, disarmed of her natural weapons, free argument and debate, errors ceasing to be dangerous when it is permitted freely to contradict them." Let it be so.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. The minutes from the September 11, 2014 meeting have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is Canela or Chris Patterson here? Oh, good, good. Welcome. If you would please come to the front, we have a resolution for you. They're here to tell us about the Buddy Walk, which, come on up, come on up, turn around. There you go. To tell us about the Buddy Walk, which raises awareness for the Down Syndrome.
Well, actually, we had the Buddy Walk a couple of weekends ago, and really, we would like to talk about Alabama Down Syndrome Day that Governor Bentley had signed into proclamation for October 1st coming up next weekend. And it's for the inclusion and the awareness of people with Down Syndrome, which is a really big step considering where it's been for the last 50 years. This is our child Gabriel, 10 months old with Down Syndrome, and he has certainly been the light of our lives. So, we're very honored for this day, and we appreciate it.
Well, I want to say thank you for coming. We have a proclamation here which also recognizes, from the City of Huntsville, recognizes Alabama Down Syndrome Day, and it's signed by me, the mayor, and backed up by the council. We say thank you very much for all your work.
All right, thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We have two resolutions, resolutions for adoption only. 2A is a resolution congratulating Ruth Del Crutcher upon her retirement as General Expediter, United States Postal Service after 36 years of outstanding service. The retirement celebration will be held at the HCM Event Center on September 27, 2014 at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Doc Shower, second by Mr. Oshewski. Discussion?
Mr. President, I will be presenting this resolution to Ruth Del Crutcher on behalf of the mayor and the city council.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. B is a resolution congratulating Ernestine Crutcher upon her retirement from the United States Postal Service after 30 years of outstanding service. The retirement celebration will be held at the HCM Event Center on September 27, 2014 at 6:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Doc Shower, second by Mr. Oshewski. Discussion?
Mr. President, again, I will be presenting this resolve to Ernestine Crutcher for her retirement, and this particular retirement and the first one will be at HCM on September 27th. At that time, I will present it on behalf of the mayor and the city council.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Have one announcement tonight. We have a class with us from Oakwood University. It's a features writing class. If there's a representative here, we'd like to go to the microphone and tell us what you're up to.
Thank you so much, sir. I'm Keena Henson, a professor in the Department of Communication at Oakwood, and our feature writing class makes it a regular scheduled item to come to find out what's happening in the city of Huntsville. We've been doing this for years. We're so glad to be here now. Thank you again.
I think you picked a good meeting. Councilmembers, we have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing to hear the appeal of the Liquor License Review Committee denying a retail liquor lounge entertainment license to Brazileum Properties, Inc., doing business as Plush Horse at 2021 Golf Road, Huntsville, Alabama 35802, at the September 4, 2014 Liquor License Review Committee Meeting. This public hearing was set September 11, 2014 at our regular council meeting. Is there a representative from the administration that's going to speak on this?
Jim, you gonna speak on this?
Mr. McGuffey, if you introduce yourself and tell us your title, please.
Jim McGuffey, City Planning Manager. This license was applied for and denied due to insufficient parking. Parking's based on occupant load, and he's roughly 100 parking places short at this facility.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Is Mr. Hurd here?
He hasn't showed up yet.
Would anybody like to address the council? Councilmembers, the attorney for the person appealing is not here yet. Do you want to hold this over until the attorney's here?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll just, can I continue this public hearing until the attorney gets here?
Just continue till later in the meeting when the attorney...
Okay, we'll continue this till later in the meeting. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-574, rezoning property lying on the east side of Slaughter Road and north of Pharaoh Road from Residence 2A District to Residence 2B District. Ms. Nichols?
Ashley Nichols, Planning Division. The proposed rezoning is approximately 6.39 acres. It's located on the east side of Slaughter Road and north of Pharaoh Road. The current zoning of this particular area is Residence 2A. The proposed rezoning is for Residence 2B. This is currently vacant property, and the property owner would like to request this change for future office and residential development.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Doc Shower, second by Mr. Oshewski. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-576, amending Article 3, Definitions, Section 3.1, interpretation and amending Article 15, Residence 2B District, Section 15.1, uses permitted; Article 20, Neighborhood Business C1 District, Section 20.1, uses permitted; Article 23, General Business C3 District, Section 23.1, uses permitted; Article 40, Light Industry District, Section 40.1, uses permitted; and Article 41, Heavy Industry, Section 41.1, uses permitted, to add assisted living facilities. This public hearing was set August 14, 2014, at the regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
Lisa Letto, Planning Division. This is adds the permitted use of assisted living facilities to the Residence 2B, Neighborhood Business C1, General Business C3, Highway Business C4, Light Industry and Heavy Industry Districts, and we've added a definition for assisted living facility, and that definition reads as follows, "A system of housing and limited care that is designed for those who need assistance with daily activities but do not require care in a nursing home." And so what this would do would just add this use as a use by right in those zoning districts, and planning commission's recommended approval.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this issue? Ms. Reed, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Jackie Reed, 1000 Ava Wallace. Uses permitted. Are those identified in each one of these as to what uses are going to be permitted in these districts when you change the district lines? Are those uses? Anyway, I came to planning department the other night, and Providence had a bunch of people here, or we're changing a lot of stuff out, and does this have anything to do with that?
I don't think so. Ms. Letto, will you explain that, please?
No, it does not. This affects the zoning ordinance in total for those zoning districts, and what it does is add assisted living facilities as a permitted use in each of those zoning districts.
So each zone has permitted uses, and this is adding one more use to that particular zone?
That's correct.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Reed?
Would the public have any way of knowing any of this? Do they get letters when they start putting all those facilities in as permitted uses? I'm concerned.
For zoning ordinance amendments that affect the entire city, we don't send a letter to every city resident. Those are advertised per state law and then newspaper of general circulation.
And we're having this in a public meeting for that reason?
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Shower. Ms. Letto, why are we doing this?
There's been an increased demand for assisted living facilities. As the population's aging, more of these facilities are wanted to locate here. It's not listed as a use by right in the zoning ordinance. We did have a determination in 2012 by the then-planning director that these were the districts that they could go in, and so now we're just making it by right.
Have there been any problems?
No, sir.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing a city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Sir, if you'll state your name and title for the record, please.
Keith Ashley, Code Enforcement Manager, City of Huntsville Community Development. This resolution identifies 75 properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. These properties are identified on Attachment A by the owner and location. The owners received written notification by regular mail that they were in violation of our ordinance and were given 14 days to correct the violations. All 75 owners failed to respond and Community Development issued work orders to cut these properties at a total cost of $17,141.11, and an average cost of $228.55. Attachment A also identifies the date and cost for cutting these properties. Owners received a written request by regular mail for payment, and they failed to respond to some requests and that the property assets be placed on these properties in order to collect our costs. The owners were notified of this proposed action, could we suspect tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Shower. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. We have no public hearings to be set. We're now at communications from the public. When I call your name, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to address the council. Mr. Rusty Lozell.
My name is Rusty Lozell. I'm with Help the Homeless Veterans and Citizens of Huntsville and Madison County. Tonight, I want to talk about a senseless murder of Mark Scott Prydmore. Mark was a homeless man who lost his mother at a very young age and struggled with that loss all of his life. He was a peaceful man, not aggressive. On September 4th, he was savagely beaten by a gang of thugs because he asked if they had any change. He was beaten so badly that he died 48 hours later. Although he was beaten to death, only one man assailant in the gang ever received a slap on the hand with a manslaughter charge. Hate crimes like this cannot go unpunished. If this would have been a verbal altercation, we wouldn't even be talking about it. But once these men gather in a group of eight or 10 thugs and return, in my eyes, that became a hate crime. Mr. Prydmore tried to defend himself to no avail. He was hit, kicked, beaten until his brain bled, and then they all just walked away. Where's the surveillance security tape of that murder? The family asked for that tape, and the police said they'd already picked it up, and there was a glitch, and it was erased. From what I understand, a bystander had a video on his phone. That, too, was magically erased. Why is it that when you are homeless, you have no rights? Whatever you do is wrong. Being homeless is not a crime, it's a situation, one that can be rectified with the proper help. Substance abuse, alcohol rehabilitation, mental health, help. Throwing more money at NACH and the Housing Authority is not the answer. Using that money in a different and better way is. A large portion of the low-income population has made a choice to be supported by welfare so they don't have to work like the rest of us. Those people who abuse the system with bogus medical claims in the effort to collect disability are the reason we don't have funds for the programs that are truly needed. I know of one woman who had her two daughters diagnosed with asthma so that she could collect $500 a month for each of them from Social Security Disability. These girls are six and seven years old. What are they disabled from? Disability is for those who cannot work due to a disability. She brags about how those checks pay for her house. When are we going to take our hands away from our ears and listen? When will the city help put together a more secure designated area for the homeless? When will Mark Scott Prydmore get true justice? Thank you.
Thank you. Rodney Cole?
Good evening. My name is Rodney Cole. I'm the chairhead for the Advisory Commission on Homelessness.
Insert your address, please.
My actual address of the office is 4411 Lloyd Nolan Parkway, Fairfield. I'm here in support of Rusty and his efforts within these actions for the homeless community. It's come to our attention that there's been some reason for concern with respect to the death of Mr. Prydmore. Upon investigating this issue, we have come to find that this is one of, but one of, a sequence of events that has spoken to the necessity of addressing it in a very real way. Although Mr. Prydmore is and was, I should say, a homeless individual, and he did, in fact, carry along some baggage with him, he was still a human being. And at the end of the day, our focus has been deterred somewhat in our view because that equation, or part of the equation, has been summarily dismissed. We would like to ask the conscientious effort to be displayed through the true health and welfare of those individuals less fortunate and not able to defend and/or speak for themselves. In attempt to ascertain what truly happened, they, meaning the family, as well as the advocacy agents for Mr. Prydmore, have been summarily dismissed as though their voices were inconsequential. That, for us, bears some reason for concern as well. The reason that I am here is to prompt and/or request and ask for some real and true concern and advancement to be shown and given to this particular situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Saunders?
Yes, my name is Sheri Saunders, and first, let me appreciate the City of Huntsville giving me this opportunity to speak. In my capacity, I am a state...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we need your address for the record, please.
My address is Morgan County. Do you need the street, sir?
Yes.
6231 East Upper River Road, Somerville, Alabama 35670. Do you need anything else, sir?
No, that's it. Go ahead.
First, let me establish my positions in this community. I'm a State of Alabama Disability Advocate through the governor's office. I work for Mr. Cole and the committee to protect the homeless as a federal advocate investigator. I am assigned North Alabama. I have spent the last year undercover researching, investigating the aspects of these crimes that we are speaking to you right now about. A couple of weeks ago, I was asked by the family of Mark Prydmore to represent them in this capacity as a federal advocate investigator. In my investigations, I have discovered that the Huntsville Police Department has took it upon themselves to make decisions for investigative tools that could put them in a position to be investigated themselves. It is apparent that my investigation is not going to go forward well for me if I am continued to be harassed, if the family of the victim is continued to be harassed in this capacity. I need to be given all assurances that my health will remain the same as it stands today. I cannot state that I have those assurances at this moment in time. There are many aspects of this case that involves the city of Huntsville in more than one way. At this moment, I feel like I do not need to go further as this will affect the case, but we need to understand that I am here in a position of advocacy. I am a single individual, but through my work, and I am now 40 years old, through my work up until this point in my life, I have gathered wisdom. And in that wisdom, I would like to ask for a favor of the City of Huntsville and these people I see before me. I would like to ask for your friendship in going forward with these investigations. I feel like it would be in our best interest that we work together. In my capacity, you will see me in Huntsville. I work for Mr. Cole, but I am North Alabama's advocate investigator, and when someone has a problem, they can come to me. I have a problem, and I am now coming to you. I would like your help, I would like your friendship, and I would like a coalition of individuals that can assist me in my job. I appreciate, once again, the opportunity to speak to the City of Huntsville. My name is Sheri Saunders. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jefferson, Ms. Saunders made some serious allegations. Who should we instruct her to tell these allegations to?
Well, she's welcome to share the information with the chief of police, for starters. She's also is welcome to communicate with my office, with me personally, if you would like to do that. I'm the city attorney for the City of Huntsville, and that would probably be the best places to start. If you're not comfortable speaking with one of us, you're welcome to contact officials with the State of Alabama if you feel more comfortable discussing it with them.
Ms. Crystal Riggins?
Hi, my name is Christie Riggins. I'm the stepdaughter to the deceased Mark Scott Prydmore. I want everyone to know who my stepdad was. I was 15 when Mark came into my life. As with any teenager and parent, step included, we had our ups and downs, but through it all, Mark loved me more than anything, and he was more of a dad to me than my real dad was. Mark had a heart of gold. He would give his last bite of food or money if it would help another. Mark's life has not been an easy one. His mother died when he was nine, and with that death, his father left. Mark and his older brother Ron had to handle life the best they could. Mark turned to alcohol and soon turned into an alcoholic. The disease took a hold of Mark and never let go. Although family tried to help, he couldn't stop drinking, which is what led him to the streets. Although he was homeless, we still stayed in contact, and I still love him very much. My stepdad didn't deserve to be murdered, nor did he deserve the disrespectful treatment that he received due to being homeless from the group of men at the fight to HEMZI to the Huntsville Hospital. With Mark's death, I hope that our community can be more acceptable about the homeless and understand that homeless are humans and they have a story. Please be kind and compassionate. Everyone seems to label homeless. No one knows what led them to the streets. I, myself, have received a few stories that have touched my heart beyond belief. When these people, humans or persons, ask for change, know that it's not always that they want a beer. Believe it or not, they are like you and I. They want to wash their clothes and covers, they want ice cream or batteries so they can listen to their radio. We must stop this stereotyping of the homeless and understand that this can happen to anyone at any age and any time. It could happen to you. I'm not just here for my dad, but this is also to fight for my homeless friends that have shown more support than our coworkers and friends have. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Ms. Riggins, would you get her address?
We have her address.
She didn't make it.
Yeah, she put it on the list. Josh Prydmore?
Hi, my name is Joshua Prydmore. It's my Uncle Mark, and I think I got it on the wrong side. Uncle Mark was my favorite uncle and will be missed so much. I know without a doubt in my mind that he did not mean for this to happen to him, and he was not out there doing the wrong. And yes, he might have been doing wrong by the drug, but he cannot overcome his disease he had. But I know the times that we shared as a kid, of me riding motorcycles with him and him riding me around in his truck, watching DVDs in his truck, and I just feel like the time was cut so short because of all this that was going on, and I just wish that I could have more time with him. He was a really good guy, like he would give you the shirt off of his back, and just like I would, and he would help anyone out if he didn't have it. He would give you his last dollar in his pocket. And as his nephew, I'm just trying to seek justice for his death, and I will not stop until the truth is known. And Uncle Mark, I will see you soon. Dad told me to tell you that he loves you very much and misses you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Walker?
I'm Sharon Walker. I'm the founder of the Rosa Sharon Soup Kitchen in Huntsville. My address is 2201 Walnut Street in Huntsville. I'm here today, I did not know Mark Prydmore personally, but I do know dignity and I do know respect. I know that the homeless don't receive a lot of that. I know the way that Mark died was not respectful, and it was not with dignity. When you ask someone for change, and then they leave and come back with a gang of people to beat you up until your brain is swollen, and then one person gets charged with manslaughter, to me, that's wrong. To me, that's premeditated murder. The other issue I have is that someone at Huntsville Hospital, although they knew who he was, and there's pictures on the internet of Josh with Mark while he's in bed on a respirator, is that someone at Huntsville Hospital put a name band on him saying Whiskey Doe. They knew his name. And I don't care if they're having to go through the alphabet and name someone, Amy Doe or John Doe or whatever, don't use whiskey. That is very disrespectful. Whoever did that, that was a sick joke, and that wasn't funny. And they need to do community service and work with the homeless and see that homeless people are human beings. I know homeless people that are addicts, that are lazy, and that are alcoholics. And at the same time, I know people that live in houses that are lazy and that are alcoholics and are addicts. Every person needs to be treated with respect, whether they live in a house or an apartment, or they live in a tent, or they have to go to sleep at night with a cardboard box around them. They're human beings. I talk to these people every single day. They have feelings, they have dreams, and they have hopes, and they've had a hard time in life, they're in a bad circumstance. Most of them want to get out of that circumstance. Most of them want to stop living that lifestyle. It's hard when you don't have an address to get a job, or you don't have a phone, and they can't call you about a job interview. Let's just treat homeless people with respect, the same respect as someone who lives on Pill Hill. Let's give them the same respect and dignity. And Mark Prydmore and his death, he needs respect and dignity as well as his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Clarence Johnson?
Dr. Clarence Johnson, 3302 Butchery Drive, Huntsville, North Huntsville Social Justice Chairperson. And this evening, the family of Mr. Mark Prydmore have come through pain and anguish to beseech our city, to beseech the governance, to find some closure for their... to beseech our city, to beseech the governance, to find some closure for them in their situation with the, that resulted in the passing of Mr. Prydmore. I listened to what all has been said, words being said. Ms. Walker pointed to a key factor about the homeless when she said we should treat them with respect. I understand that this is being addressed to the City Council and Mayor. But the city at large must come to understand that the homeless are not invisible people. I've spent four years, a weekend, night and day with the Operation Stand Down Military Homeless, being retired military myself, trying to pay back. They are human beings. They have a right to live and they have a right to as much comfort as they seek. The pursuit of happiness, I believe, is the clause that governs that. I think that we need to wrap our arms around the Prydmore family as a city and as the governing body of this city. The law will be the law. The findings will be the findings. But this family should be made to be known that this city does care about what happened and does care about those individuals we too often walk by and don't see, the invisible people, right there before our eyes and at our feet. They seek, they have a life that may not be like others, may not be as well as yours or mine, but they have life and they should be guaranteed by law, law enforcement, and others, community members, to have as good a life as they possibly can. I plead with this governing body of our great city to seek to get, bring some kind of information, comfort, and closure to this family concerning the loss of their loved one. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Burke?
My name is Molly Burke. The address is 1580 Sparkman Drive. I'm the Outreach Specialist for Jobs for Vets. Ms. Walker addressed not only the need for respect for the homeless, but also she addressed their dreams to rise above this situation. I'm part of a program intended to do just that. This Monday, this past Monday, we started Jobs for Vets. It's over at 1580 Sparkman Drive. We're helping unemployed homeless veterans find employment. Our services include employment readiness training, employment placement assistance. We're actually coordinating with employers in the community to find jobs that folks with, let's say, gray backgrounds can work. We have linkages and provide linkages to VA benefits and are cultivating linkages to social services in the area. And we provide employment-related services, help for them to, if they need interview clothes, if they need transportation to work, things along those lines. Those are the kind of things that we're trying to get up and running. And I would just like to ask if anybody in this room, or anybody who knows anybody in this room, knows either A, a vet, a homeless vet, or B, someone in one of these services or someone who'd like to coordinate some of these services, please have them call 256-8121-JOB. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie Reed? Good evening.
I would like to thank you for laying public input and for laying citizens to be involved in government. I think it's a great thing. I also want to thank you for Holmes Avenue. Looks like heaven every time I come down through there, three or four times a day. I can't get over how good that really looks up there. I want to thank you for the contractors doing the white and white lines on the new pavement. I think it looks good. We can see where we're going when it's dark. I also, I must thank God tonight, who stands with me daily and gives me the strength, faith, courage, and the determination to come down here to do what I do. If he ever leaves me, I'll have to quit. But, but you know where I come from and he loves everyone and I love everyone. No matter how hard I get on you sometimes, I still love you. I want to thank you for respecting me and being good to me, the many years I've been coming down here. Now, the problems. We've got some. HPD is blocking off the courthouse up here every Friday, and I've talked to the chief about it and he's going to make some adjustment. We can't get in the courthouse on the north side or whatever. We want to get in the courthouse on Fridays. If you party hearty, move your time up from seven o'clock in the morning blocking it off to three o'clock in the afternoon. I know you like block parties and you want to party hearty, but I want to get in the courthouse too and I don't want to walk halfway downtown to get to the courthouse. I'm not the only one fussing about it. There's more people fussing about it. My biggest complaint tonight is employees one percent. You could have found more money for these employees, but anyway. And then I see overtime for the city employees was up to around $900,000. Or did I misread that last night? I don't know if I did or not. But Stone Middle School has been eating on me and everybody else in this city. Why in the world is a city of Huntsville employees over there on overtime, tearing down half a building that's supposed to have owned by Scrimper? I got the contracts here and all of it, it looks like it's sort of, it don't look too good to me. I can't make sense. Nobody got an environmental permit. Nobody got a demolition permit. And it says the owner's of City of Huntsville. I didn't know you bought that building. Nobody's got the deed in their name yet. It says owner, City of Huntsville. Y'all didn't buy that. Quit that. It's way too late. They work Thursday, all day Friday, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and now they're doing the landscaping to make it so beautiful over there. Who's paying for this anyway? We, the taxpayers, wants to know. I got the contract here, but it's shady and it's not signed by anybody. I know what's going on. I want you to tell the public and me later. How in the world did you come up with this? I want to thank Mr. Bill Kline and all of, all of you sitting up there.
Ms. Reed, your time's up.
I want to thank you for one more thing. Can I? May I?
Yeah, real quick, go ahead.
It's about you, Mr. Kline. Real quick, okay, I'll hurry. Mary Wiley had been made an honorary citizen of Huntsville, Alabama, August the 26th. Mr. Bill Kline made this up for my mother-in-law, who was a hundred. She came to Huntsville and had her birthday party. Thank you very much. She'll be proud of that. And thank all of you for signing it. Someday when I'm dead, I hope you make me an honorary citizen. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Jerry Burnett?
And thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jerry Burnett and I live at 2405 Green Hill Drive in Huntsville. And I just want to speak briefly to our community leaders and particularly to our elected officials. As individuals serving in leadership capacities, you have influence over those whom you serve. They are your constituents. You bear the responsibility of casting a positive image for the sake of the community we live in. That is, if we want to make the world a better place for the next generation. And casting a positive image should include calling out racism whenever and wherever it rears its ugly head, because racism have no place in today's society and it most certainly have no place in politics. There's not enough room for it. My point is this. There are too many local and our state political candidates running against President Obama, and I have not seen his name on a ballot lately. I recognize coded racism, and you should too. But anytime a political candidate attached President Obama's name in an opposition to his or her opponent, it becomes racialized and they are guilty of playing the race card. It's coded, but it's racism just the same. We see the effect of coded racism when we look at the Affordable Care Act bill, how certain legislators refer to the bill as Obamacare and mislead the public with false accusation, at the same time turning the public against the very bill that would provide a great service to hundreds and thousands of citizens right here in Alabama. In spite of what Congressman Mo Brooks, Governor Bentley, and other legislators have said about the health care bill, research institutions have concluded that extending the Affordable Care Act to Alabama would provide affordable health care for more than 300,000 Alabamians. And it would save between 200 and 562 lives per year in Alabama alone and would generate more than $1.7 billion in revenue. It would also add between 24,000 to 51,000 new jobs for the state of Alabama. The nonpartisan Congressional Budget Office projected that the Affordable Care Act would reduce the federal deficit by $210 billion over 10 years. When we sit silent and allow coded racism to hinder a valuable piece of legislature such as this, it becomes dangerous. Coded racism hurts society in many ways. It doesn't matter if you're old or young, black or white, Republican or Democrat. If you consider yourself to be a conservative or liberal, the fact remains that if you...
Mr. Burnett, your time's up.
Could I have one more minute, please?
Councilmembers, is that okay?
Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
The fact remains that if, if you live and work in Alabama with sub, and you receive substandard wages, then you need liberated from that condition in which you're living in, because one cannot conserve what they do not have. And when we try to conserve what we do not have, it perpetuates poverty. And Alabama has a long history of poverty. Racism is something that has happened towards all races of people, but no matter what the race may be, when someone is a racist, there's no explanation for it other than ignorant. Racism make life not worth living and this world not livable. Community leaders and elected officials have the responsibility to address racist issues. And I'm here to call on you to do just that. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Hurd, Mr. Hurd, are you here for the Brazelton Plush Horseman?
I am.
Okay, we'll, we'll take that up later in the meeting.
All right.
Thank you. Pastor TC Johnson?
TC Johnson, 1800 Sparkman Drive. Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know what this question's going to be answered, but I've had several concerns and calls relative to the relationship between the business partners and the city as it relates to the Stone Middle School issue as well. One concern had to do with it once being over $5 million and we getting it for 1.7 million dollars. That's an, that's an issue, but understandable as we want the city to progress. The relationship between the owners and, and the mayor have been questioned. I can't answer those. But I would like to know, as Ms. Reed asked, what, what is the relationship if someone purchased the property as, as an independent business? It appears that our tax dollars are doing some serious work on preparing that building. And I'm sure there's an explanation. And so I would ask to answer now, what is that relationship that requires that the city do the groundwork for an independent business? I don't know, but I'd like to know because I'd like to answer the question. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Kline, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, Reverend Johnson, Ms. Reed, I'd be glad to tell you about it. The, the city is doing some work. We're doing it for the school system. It's sort of intergovernmental cooperation. The city is doing some work for the, for the school system and the school system does other things for us in, in the future. What I do know about the, about the project, about five or six years ago, there was an appraisal that came in at that price, $5 million or whatever. Never sold, nothing was going on. School system's sort of like a firecracker with the fuse getting shorter. Every year, they're spending over $350,000 in maintaining the building, security, utilities. And this is a school system, you know, not, not city, city government building. But several months ago, I invited Dr. Wodenski to come to a neighborhood meeting that was held with Holiday Homes, Merrimack, Low Mill, West Lawn. I think Fleming Westbury was also represented and I believe possibly Bailey and Patton Estates were, was represented. The concerns we had was about empty school buildings and the impact that they have on, on neighborhoods. Of course, the school board, they run the system. No, no bones about that, but we just waved the flag about the concerns that we had. In the aftermath of that, West Huntsville Elementary School was sold. I think they closed sometime this week. It's being sold to a high-tech computer startup incubator company, which is a very good thing for the Low Mill neighborhood. Similarly, this piece of property, which had been sitting there, and there was some question about the appraisal, but even after five years of being on the market, the value has dropped. And again, the school system's spending about $350,000 a year maintaining the building. The deal that got was worked out, as you know, there are two breweries going in. There's going to be about $6 million worth of improvements, construction that are taking place on the property. Also, from the appraisal, you'd have to subtract about $2 million from the cost of replacing the roof, because the roof had gotten holes in it and gotten so bad, or had gotten worse, that the $2 million was the estimate of the replacement of the roof, which was not an issue two years ago. When the, when the property, you know, gets complete or even during the construction process, the sales tax on building materials, that's new revenue, one-time revenue that comes into the city of Huntsville. Also, the school itself, because it was owned, it's owned by the school system, no property tax comes in. Now, because it goes to a private person, there is property tax on the basis of a, making a guess, somewhere between six, seven, eight million dollars worth of value on, on the property. So, that's what I found out, because I had questions about it, had people who, who had asked me about that, similar to the way you have. In addition, it is a plus for the West Huntsville area after having a blight there and hopefully there could be more good things that will come along that corridor along Governor's Drive. But I just want to tell you everything I've found out about it.
Thank you, Ms. Kline. Pat Glass?
Pat Glass, 7208 Chadwell Road, Huntsville. Mayor, Council. Tonight, I would like to speak about a subject that concerns not only Huntsville, but the entire state of Alabama. And that subject is the growing concern among Alabama residents about the implementation of the Alabama College and Career Readiness Standards, also known as Common Core, to be implemented this year in 2014. Why would anybody object to a nationalized, one-size-fits-all education? The reasons are many. First and most importantly, Common Core standards take away parental control and allow for the collection of massive personal, non-academic data on our children. Is this what Huntsville and Alabama want? And if you think that a private school or homeschooling is the answer, think again because Common Core impacts them too. Common Core is touted as preparing students to compete on the global stage. But is it really? I understand that higher levels of math, such as trigonometry and calculus, will not be included in the curriculum. How is this helpful on the global stage? Education experts assert it will put students two years behind other countries. Common Core is a set of mandatory national standards, tests, and curriculum for kindergarten through 12th grade that will be controlled from Washington DC as a top-down, nationalized education. We are told that local control will be maintained. If this is so, then what is the need for Common Core as we already have local control? Do we want a curriculum that moves away from the founding principle that parents, not federal government, should control local education? What about God? Will the mores and values of the God of our fathers be replaced by the mores and values of Washington DC? And if so, is that what we want? I understand that 78% of Alabama residents are not in favor of Common Core values and standards. And yet, here they are being implemented as we speak. Why is this? Alabama legislator Joe Hubbard, in an effort...
Ms. Glass, your time's up. Do you need one more minute?
Just half a minute.
One more minute. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
In an effort to represent his constituency, drafted... In an effort to represent his constituency, drafted a resolution to defund Common Core, which passed the Senate but died in a House committee. Should this important issue be put into the hands of Alabama voters in a referendum or special vote of some kind? It's our tax dollars. It's our kids. Shouldn't we have a vote?
Thank you. Mr. Joe Nixon? Houston Campbell? Houston Campbell? Then I have Sherri Saunders, and I believe Sherri Saunders, you've already spoken. So that's my story. Okay, we're now at eight Huntsville utility items. There are none. We're at board appointments. We have a resolution to reappoint Ed Pugh to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October first, 2017. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Ben Bragg to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October first, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Bob, Bob Ince still to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October first, 2017.
Still move.
To approve.
Well, Mr. Kling made the motion. Dr. Showers, are you second that?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Jane Tippett to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October first, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Donna Alt Parker to the Beautification Board for a term to expire October first, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Joe Green to the Barrett Memorial Committee for a term to expire October first, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to appoint Rick Hemstead to the Barrett Memorial Committee for a term to expire October first, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Oshewski. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to appoint Martha Jo Smith to the City Tree Commission for a term to expire October eighth, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Lyle Voiles to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals for a term to expire August twenty-second, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Oshewski. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Ten is a resolution to reappoint Corinne Teague Johnson to the Human Relations Commission of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire September eighth, 2018.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Oshewski. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Board appointment nominations. We have a nomination of Lawrence R. Miller Jr. to the Beautification Board for a term to expire on October first, 2017. Are there other nominations? Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, nominate Pam Cobb for reappointment to the Human Relations Commission.
Pam Cobb for reappointment to the Human Relations Commission. Thank you. Are there others? Moving on, we're at ten approval expenditures. Ten A is a resolution to authorize expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, move for payment of vouchers in the amount of eight million one-hundred thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Mr. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
No, but I, we do have the mayor's budget coming up and I'm sure there'll be some discussion, overview of what we had discussed yesterday.
Yes, absolutely. We'll be having the budget here soon. Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, just to address some of the issues. Chief, would you give us a report at the next, next meeting on the Mark Predmore case? If you have any knowledge or do, do you have knowledge now or do, do you need to get with investigators to see, see where that was or is?
No, sir. The knowledge that I have is that, that there wasn't a rest made in the case. The district attorney is, is aware of all the facts. I, I need to contact the district attorney and see what the status is.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And also, the, one of the questions, I think, Pastor Johnson had, Mr. Kling answered a, a good bit of it, but there was a, another appraisal on Stone Middle School that was done four years after the five million dollar appraisal was done and was considered Stone Middle School as just the field it was done. I think in January of 2014, that, that evaluated the property a little bit over 1.1 million dollars. It was in Crystal Bonaventure's story with AL.com. If you look that back up, there's a link to it and has actually the appraisal in there. So that might help you out some. Some of the things that are going on in the city of Huntsville, if any of you had a chance tonight, Green Street Market was open. Green Street Market had catfish on the square and was sponsored by the Alabama Agricultural Commission. Tonight, as you walk out, you will probably hear music. There'll be music and entertainment on the square tonight and Friday night. So those are some of the activities. The International Festival happens at UAH from nine-thirty to five on Saturday. And the Mercury Rising Chili Cook-Off will be Saturday at Big Spring Park. And finally, we kicked off the Healthy Huntsville Walking Challenge this past week, where we're asking everybody to walk twenty-five miles in the month of October, and they're in the thirty-one days. Walking that twenty-five miles is just a little bit of a test, just to get a little bit healthier and we're asking everybody in Huntsville to get a little bit healthier. All of us have a little bit more than I should carry and so I'll be trying to take a little bit more off there and try to make it, make it. But, you know, one of the goals of this is to have a healthier population and a healthier population is more productive, not only at work, but you're more health, you're more productive at home and you feel a little bit better. So we would hope that everybody would, would work with us on that and meet the challenge. Blue Cross Blue Shield has some prizes for those who can meet that challenge. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with sorrow that I report the passing of Carter Sibley, who I think many, many of us up here knew. Carter had been involved in local politics. He was active in the Huntsville J.C.'s and he had been a mentor and a friend to me for several years. He was very active in neighborhood issues over in the Fleming Westbury area and a great person. He will be missed. Couple things that were going on the last couple of weeks in, out in the district that we've had some good, good times with. Merrimack Neighborhood Area had their Saturday morning cleanup two Saturdays ago and I got plenty of exercise bending over, picking up litter. I want to thank Joy McKee and her folks because they did a great job, as they do, with all these neighborhood cleanups, providing support, tools, and, and working with the residents and picking up the bags of picked up litter. But good times were held by those that came out. We got good exercise and we did stretch our legs a little bit. It's a good thing that we did because last Saturday, the week afterward, Merrimack Neighborhood Association had their chili cookout. And it was a tough job, Mr. President, but just to be diplomatic to all those good people, I thought it was, you know, only proper for me to take a, a half bowl full of each of the types of chili. They were all homemade, delicious. Some had, were made with venison meat, others were made with chicken and habanera cheese. They were all, all very good. Couple things that I guess I just want to kind of mention, my thoughts, we are kind of like a big family in a way. I want to express my sincere sorrow to Mark Roberts for the loss of his mom. And also, my thoughts are with Shane Davis, who I know is taking good care of his dad, who's having to deal with a lot of issues. And certainly, we do wish, wish them the best, know that, that we're thinking of, of them. Mr. President, you know, from time to time, just about every meeting, I guess, we, we have issues related to the homeless that come up. The gentleman from the Homeless Advocacy Group has been here on numerous occasions. There he is tonight. And I've had some very good discussions at my town meetings with Carol Cotney, who's, who is homeless. And Carol is certainly, you know, in the informal setting that we have at the town meeting with, with a few people around, we're able to talk about things and she's kind of counseled me on a lot of things. And of course, we're up here and we learn things and we try to deal with things the best we can. But I guess I wanted to ask if maybe somewhere along the line, if we could set up some sort of a work session where we could get the various agencies who provide services to the homeless that we provide funding to and get the agencies together and see if, if there's something we can do to get a better connection together. Also, and I think we took some action where residency was not going to be an issue that would prohibit homeless from applying for City of Huntsville jobs. So that was a step and we appreciate Byron Thomas for doing that. But I think there's different things that we could do and, you know, maybe we can get a little bit better connection and try to get better communication. I don't know the answers. I'd like to think I could help a little bit in the process, but we do here and it doesn't go in one ear out the other ear, but see what we could do. Maybe we can, just getting people together, resources, and there might be some better connections. And some other things that we could do, like we did, like Mr. Thomas was able to do as far as dealing with the residency for, for application. So maybe we could set that up and then get communication out to the agencies. And certainly, I would hope Carol Cotney, we can reach her, would be able to come. One possible idea, and it's not a magic thing, but there may be some surplus bicycles that the police department has that were never claimed from various crime scenes and maybe after a certain period of time, if they're, they're going to be claimed, they can be turned over to the homeless agencies to distribute because, you know, I did a lot of walking this past summer and I can tell you, riding a bicycle, you can certainly cover a lot of territory much faster with a lot less effort. That could be just a small thing that we could do that would help contribute to. So just want to throw that out and maybe we could work it out with scheduling a work session, letting the agencies know, the agencies that we provide funding and then the agencies that have contacts with the homeless and we could get some of them to come down. So we could hear from them and try to do, you know, do some good and help. And, Mr. President, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get that work session set up. Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had opportunity today to attend Glenn Pippin's retirement from Reston Arsenal, twenty-seven point four years. I want to thank Tara Hasfield and Joy McKee. Are they here tonight? That they are here. Just need to thank them for what they do in our city. Last council meeting, I had asked for a status report on Pulaski Pipe. Most of you know now, we are doing a massive repave on Pulaski and there are certain sites, intersections that are doing base work. And I just want to thank them. On behalf of the residents that resides at the Monaco Road, Drake Mountain Estates, Mr. Hasfield, Ms. McKee, the citizens who reside there, I want to thank you all for what you've been doing in that neighborhood. I would like, Mr. Hasfield, if we would take a look at a ditch that's located between Bank and John Quill to, to be evaluated. That's a ditch that's between Bank Street and John Quill to be evaluated. On Monday, Mount Sheeran Home Owners Association will be meeting at the Shower Center at six o'clock. I would be attending Chairman Dale Strong's State of the Counties address on Monday. Want to say to all the friends and supporters of Alabama A&amp;M University that on October the fourth, we will be having the homecoming game and the Lewis Cruz Classic together. Encourage all our citizens, friends, and supporters of Alabama A&amp;M University to be out. That's Saturday, October the fourth. On that day, the parade will start at eight o'clock and the game is at two-thirty. Also, leading up to the game, there will be a coaches breakfast for Lewis Cruz Classic and that will be October the second at eight o'clock in the Knight Center. And finally, Mr. Hasfield, there is a neighborhood that's called Patterson Place on Blue Springs Road, twenty-six forty. We have a green space there and I've gotten several calls on our need to have that cut. Again, that's twenty-six forty, Blue Springs Road, Patterson Place. Mr. President, I'm going to have to leave you now. I want the public to know, the citizens that I represent, that we had a work session on last evening where the budget for the coming up year was submitted to us and also the Capitol Outlay Plan. Though I won't be here for the actual vote tonight, I am in support of the position from the budget, both budgets, the general budget and the Capitol budget. However, there may be some additional input after the meeting tonight, but I am in support of what the mayor has presented to the council members on last evening at a budget hearing. So with that, would you excuse me? I'll be going from here to Alabama A&amp;M to a gala at Union Chapel. And so I'm going to leave you now and may everybody be blessed. I want to thank all these people, these citizens who are out here tonight, classes and concerned citizens from all over the city for your presence. It is a delight to have you come and share in what your elected officials do for you on behalf of the city of Huntsville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oshewski?
Yeah, I, I don't know what it is about when you're coming toward the end, but people know how to get ahold of you now more than they ever have before. And the good news is, is we, I continue to say every time I come to these meetings about the great staff that works here because I've had multitude of things this last week across, across full-spectrum staff. And I just want to say that, you know, Shanes and Danny Shays and Mark Roberts and community development, from grass cutting to problems with buildings, with commercial versus, you know, fourplexes to paint on roads that people didn't believe needed to be there for marathons and such. It's a lot of great effort this week and I really appreciate it as I always do. Jerry, I might assume you didn't get your name on it fast enough tonight so I could hear about our soldiers or you're going to come up later? All right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmembers, let's, we had passed over the public hearing on the plush horse and let's go back to that and take care of it now. We've already heard from Mr. McGuffey. Mr. Hurd, would you like to address this, please?
Evening, council. My name's Kevin Hurd. I represent Brazelton Properties. The issue before the council then this evening is the appeal of the Liquor License Review Committee denying the retail liquor license lounge to Brazelton Properties and why we maintain that that denial was arbitrary. Quite simply, the property is commonly referred to as the plush horse. The plush horse, according to the fire department, has never stopped being a place of assembly. As a place of assembly, it has an occupancy of approximately five-hundred-and-eighty-five people. With that occupancy, you have to have a corresponding... With that occupancy, you have to have a corresponding amount of parking spaces. That would be 352. Now, we understand that Mr. Culver, although he's not here this evening, Councilman Culver counted 358 spaces, but that is at odds with what the city has recently counted. They started at 205, and now I understand that they are at 255. Our position quite simply is this: The plush horse as a lounge employs people. Brazelton Properties seeks to keep people employed at the lounge and wants that liquor license, and wants to do so in a method and a manner in which is consistent with the use of that property in the past. The denial of the liquor license was arbitrary because if the city now says, well, you don't have enough parking spaces because you must have 352 or 255, Mr. Brazelton, Brazelton Properties, offered to reduce the occupancy of that property down to 425. At 425 people, that meets the 255 parking space requirement. We're told, though, by the fire department that you cannot lower the occupancy to 425. So we're caught in a catch-22. On the one hand, you have the fire department who's saying, you cannot, because you're grandfathered in, lower your occupancy to meet the amount of parking spaces that are required. And on the other hand, if we increase the space, well, then you have additional requirements which we believe we met. So our position is, quite frankly, it's arbitrary. We're looking to this council to approve the license. We believe that we meet all the terms and the requirements of that granting of the license, and that's our position.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address counsel on this particular issue?
If I could, one more, Mr. President.
Sure, go ahead.
On the issue, at the review, when we were before the Liquor License Review Committee, there was a lady who lived nearby, and our position quite frankly is, the people that live nearby that location know, first of all, they've moved to it. It's been a liquor license, it's been a lounge since 1970. It has consistently been a place of assembly. So it's, they've moved to that particular area with that knowledge. Second of all, it's arbitrary to simply say, because of what may have happened in the past, it would happen in the future. That is not justification to deny this license. You cannot say, because the plush horse has had an event in the past, it would do so in the future. That is not sufficient justification. So with that in mind, we respectfully request that this council grant us the liquor license.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address counsel? Okay, the public hearing is now closed.
Somebody has a microphone.
Mr. McGuffey is there, represents the city. Public hearing is now closed. Ms. Joffre, could you advise the council on what our options are?
In the absence of a motion to approve the license, which is approved by a majority of the council, then the denial of the license would be upheld. It would have to be an affirmative vote, approved by a majority of the council membership.
Is it appropriate for us to have discussion without making a motion? Are we allowed?
Well...
I know it's not by Robert's rules, but is there any problem with, I have questions and I don't want to put a motion on the floor without asking a question?
That's fine.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling.
If I can make a suggestion, you make a motion on something for discussion purposes. Somebody would second it for discussion purposes, and then you could withdraw it after you've had your questions asked.
Yeah, and then we're going to get to the same place, but yeah. Mr. McGuffey, could you comment on Mr. Hurd's arguments? That argument seems to make sense to me, that if they wanted to have less people in, then they would need less parking spaces and they can meet the requirement and get a liquor license. Why do you not agree with that argument?
Well, the fire department sets the document load, and if you change the document load, based on what I understand, to a lower number, it triggers fire department regulations as far as sprinkling the facility and other requirements they can't satisfy. So they're, again, like he stated, stuck in a catch-22 to lower the load. I'm stuck with 586, which is the current load the fire department has given them, and he needs 350 parking places. He has 245.
So in your mind, the only way you would approve this, if he had 385 parking spaces?
Yeah, 352 parking places.
352? How many do they have?
We counted 245. We were asked to go recount after the last meeting, and we did, because Mr. Brazelton restriped the property. And after he restriped it, we did find additional parking places to a total of 245 parking places.
And what do you think the reason is everybody has different counts?
I think over the years, the parking layout's changed a bit, maybe through striping, maybe through additions to the parking lot, I'm not sure. But all I can go with is the current striping that's out there, so that's what we did.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hurd.
Would you please ask him whether he counted the parking spaces that are within the gravel area? Because we understand, and this is where the discrepancy is, if you count the parking spaces based on striping, we've counted as many as 358. I don't know where he comes up with 255 when he knows full well that they've improved the area so that they've added a gravel area for additional parking spaces. And we don't believe that his number of 255 is accurate.
I think we're at 245.
245.
245.
We don't, did he count the parking spaces in the area where the gravel was?
I have no idea. Mr. McGuffey?
We did not. We did not count the gravel due to the fact that the ordinance states, the zoning ordinance states, that if you increase the parking lot by more than 5%, which would be to add parking places, the entire site must be compliant with lighting and landscaping. So in order for me to count the additional gravel parking places, he would have to upgrade the site lighting and landscaping.
So you have not counted the gravel parking space?
I cannot count those.
And if they count, then there's some other laws that kick in and...
Correct.
Okay. And still going to throw it back out?
But, Mr. President, if you do that, what you've done basically is, is this, we've left a building with 585 people, as it constantly being a place of assembly. If you're simply going to say, well, now you cannot count that extra space because you don't have green space, he's never even said how much more green space we're going to need. It's arbitrary. It's subjective, and it's arbitrary.
Mr. President, there's nothing arbitrary about the parking requirements under the zoning ordinance. It's a very clear formula, and they're very specific regulations, and Mr. Brazelton has been advised of those regulations.
With all due respect, Mr. Joffre, you know as well as I do, if you go out there and you count spaces, you will not come up with 245. You will come up with a different number. The question is, how much additional green space does Brazelton Properties have to have? We've never been told that. That is a subjective interpretation.
It would be his responsibility to provide that information. If he chose to provide us with a current site plan showing the amount of parking places or landscaping or lighting, we would be happy to review it.
Mr. President, this is another example of the goalposts moving. This is a constant battle, and this goalpost has moved constantly because of the subjective requirements that he wants us to meet.
Ms. Joffre, I assume the requirements are the requirements, and they're written down?
They are. There's been no mystery about them, and I respectfully disagree with Mr. Hurd. The requirements are very clear, and they've been explained to Mr. Brazelton, and they have not been complied with, so.
Councilmembers, any further discussion? Is there a motion? So this dies for lack of motion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling.
Mr. Joffre, would it be inappropriate for me to raise the issue that's been out for a while about the city buying that property?
That's entirely up to the council.
For whatever it's worth, in fact, even at last night's budget meeting, you know, I'd mentioned that. I think Councilman Culver and I at different times have kind of raised it about the city. I don't know if it's still out there or not, but about the city getting an appraisal. Mr. Brazelton had made several months ago, very, what I thought was a very generous offer of selling it to the city for half the appraised value. I think, as I understand it, the city has to get its own appraisal, and I think it's going to be constructed in a way where the city would buy it from him for half price, and this would be constructed in a way where he would get tax credit for donating the other half. I don't know if that's still on the table with y'all or not, but...
I'm not sure, Councilman, but I would say this, that the net effect is, is this property economically unviable? I mean, by virtue of letting this die, there's nothing else that's going to go on at this property. It's going to sit there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now at 13 unfinished business items for action. 13A is ordinance number 14-665, substitute A to adopt the City of Huntsville's budget ordinance for fiscal year 2014-2015. This was introduced September 11, 2014, at a regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Is Mr. Taylor here?
As Mr. Taylor comes, I think our creative writing class is about to leave. Is that right? Or they have to go home? We want to thank them for coming. You came on a great night. There should be a lot of creative writing being done out of tonight, so thank you very much.
Do you want to say anything? Mr. President, we are now going into discussion about the 2015 budget. The 2015 budget has a total revenue and total expenditure on the operating side of $245,888,189. As we discussed last night, it is a, there's about $4 million more dollars in this budget, 4.9 million, I believe, more than there was in last year's budget with step raises, with COLAs, with longevity pay, with some things that are on the necessary list that we have put on in the budget, our crucial list put on the budget. That money's been eaten up very quickly. I think that we're going to see, we will see the same services that will be provided next year as were provided this year, and I think we were in pretty good shape last year. So we can continue with the same services. The two additional things that have been added to the budget, one is on the operating side, which is seven police officers added to the police force for public safety. The second thing that was added to the budget is a $2 million amount that was put in for redeveloping, redeveloping our retail quarters in the city. And I think those are very important to us because it starts addressing mainly the parkway, which is our main retail quarter, and starts addressing some of the areas that have changed over time. And those areas, as they have changed, they have widened. There's been wider amounts of right-of-way there, and as it's widened, it's pushed back against neighborhoods, which it backs up to, and makes some of those buildings now functionally obsolescent. They don't work in today's retail market, and will sit there empty for a long time. So we're looking at doing those and making them redevelopment sites as we take those spots out. Whether we partner with the people who are owners or whether we buy the buildings, we will take down the buildings and we will turn it into redevelopment sites that will redevelop after the parkway finishes, which will be in about three to four years as we finish up our, restore our roads projects. So we do have an extensive plan on addressing some of the areas that we feel like we need to address, and that's what this budget does, and it still provides for the services tomorrow of what we have today, which I think we have a pretty good set of services and a pretty good city. So I will turn it over to Mr. Taylor to give you a little bit more on the details, and then we can discuss it a little bit more. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
Councilmembers, the document that you have before you is what was presented at the previous council meeting. It has been updated to reflect a few minor changes that are made. $26,000 has been added to the budget, and that is reflected in the capital plan documents you were presented last night. So there's obviously lots of accounts, and we're continuing to tweak those and make some changes, but the net change is 26,000. Also, the substitute document you have now includes an Exhibit D and an Exhibit E, which are the two budgets for the capital funds that were disclosed last night and related to the capital plan items that are on the agenda as well. So there's nothing substantially different than what was presented at the last meeting and what was discussed. What was discussed last night is these documents. So I'll be glad to ask any additional questions, answer any additional questions if you have them.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have questions? Ms. Kling.
Mr. Taylor, what is the $26,000 extra for capital to be used for? Where did that money come from?
No, sir. That is, the general fund had an increase of about $26,000. Because of the linkage that we explained to the capital plan, that actually reduced the capital resources. But we didn't present the capital plans at the last meeting, only the general fund. What was presented us now is inclusive of that change. So we're not changing anything that was presented last night. Does that make sense? There were some personnel, there are errors in the budget related to personnel and some operating costs in the budget, and we made those changes since two weeks ago, and that was reflected in what was presented last night in the capital plan.
Is Mr. Hatfield here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak to him?
Oh, yes, please. I'm sorry.
Mr. Hatfield, will you come to the microphone, please? That was a nice try to just act like you're here, and you didn't have to come speak?
Here.
Mr. Kling has questions for you.
Mr. Hatfield, I've had discussion, as councilmembers know, and I think it's been a good thing throughout the city, we've, for the last five years, been able to get the budget amended where two-thirds of the road money, resurfacing money, would go into neighborhood streets. I did talk to Terry about that for this year. Terry told me that there are some major arterials that need to be resurfaced that are really, really critical. But Mr. Hatfield's a good salesman. He pointed out that some of these arterials were actually basically in residential areas because they were surrounded by homes on both sides of the road. And so it's my understanding that you would like to have the money left unearmarked this year so that you can take care of these arterials, including the ones that are in, quote, "residential areas," Drake Avenue, Bob Wallace. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. These major arterials, most of them are five lanes. And when you run in, this past year, you run about $60,000 per one lane per mile. It adds up pretty quick on our five lanes. We got some that need attention.
Okay. But you're still, you still promise you'll keep residential streets in your sites and as best you can with the budget, you know, continue to do that throughout the city?
Yes, sir. We plan to put plenty in the residential.
In fact, I think y'all are getting down, Mr. Hamilton had talked about it last night, but I think y'all are actually improving on the, on the points that y'all have, you know, for identifying streets. Instead of it being in the 50s, you're now down to the upper 40s. Is that correct?
This past group was 45 or better, but we'll be looking in the 40 to 45 range.
Okay, well, y'all...
Making a little progress.
Okay, yeah, it's been, y'all have been very proactive. I know we got a lot, what, about 13,000 lane miles or something like that in the city, but y'all have been very proactive, you and your department, the administration, the budget folks, plusing up the way you have the last couple of years. I think you've really done a good job. So, Mr. President, with that understanding from Mr. Hatfield, we'll not have a motion, but I know he'll set his sights on doing as many residential streets and arterials in residential areas as he can.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatfield.
Ms. Oshewski?
It might be inappropriate to do the motion thing.
Sure, you can move to amend the budget at this time?
I want to give a little background first, because last night, there was Ms. Reed. And Ms. Reed's the only one who heard my discussion, so I just want to make sure, I just don't walk up here and say this. So I just want to make sure that last night, I asked some questions about police and got great answers on the 7 Squad. I asked questions about ditches and got great answers on ditches. Asked questions on the sales tax last night and what kind of money was going to bring in. I got great answers. I got questions on roads, the 1% was with the 25 million, and, you know, how we're going to, how that's going to be spent, what roads we're going to take of. And then I got, I asked questions about repaving and got repaving answered, and I asked questions about future economic development, and I got that as well. Was one piece, though, that I didn't get, and I was told I had to do it tonight, and I'll do it tonight. And in big scheme of things, I don't want to make a too big a deal out of it, except for the fact that we had a great outfit called Sciquest that was in Huntsville and has been in Huntsville and never left Huntsville. But there was a period of time, for about a two-year period, where we thought they were going to leave, and when they thought they were going to leave, we went from giving them about $150,000 a year down to $25,000, and the last year down to nothing. I fully supported the mayor during the process of no new ads two years ago, one last year. I don't consider this a new ad. ad. And I don't consider this a new ad. The mayor's budget has no new ads in nonprofits, but I don't consider this a new ad. So, I'm asking a motion to amend the budget, and the general fund establish an appropriation for the North Alabama Science Museum, which is called SciQuest, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And in the capital improvements fund, decrease the appropriation for fleet capital by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Ms. Oshewski has properly made a motion. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second. We're now back at the main motion. I'd like to speak to Chief Morris, please.
And as Chief Morris comes up, Mr. President, if I can say, you know, we will look mid-year, Councilman Oshewski, at that. That is one that I would have liked to have in there, but we could not do it. So, we will look mid-year at that. So, thank you.
Chief, tell us what the seven additional officers will do for the department and how they'll benefit our citizens.
Seven additional officers will add effectively another squad. We have some long-range plans that we feel like, last summer, we conducted a detail that we called it a street crimes unit, and it focused on specific areas. It was flexible. Gives us, so this, these seven people will give us some flexibility where we'll be able to assign personnel in specific areas at specific times to address specific issues. And the times and the dates will rotate around. It'll just give us more flexibility to quickly address issues that, without having to pull resources out of the field and impact our ability to respond to calls.
And then I assume that will lower your overtime?
Huh?
Assume that will lower your overtime?
Ah, well.
Tough question?
Yeah. With additional people, I mean, we're still going to do the same work.
Okay.
It'll give us the opportunity to do even more work. Will it lower the overtime? Probably per officer. But will the overall amount of overtime that we expend lower? I'm not sure that that'll be the case.
Okay. Are you getting enough money to keep the citizens in our city safe?
Ah, yes, sir.
That's really all I need to know?
Yeah. This is the first time we've added people in a while.
Yeah. We just want to make sure that public safety is our number one priority, and we budget that way. And so, you're telling me we have.
It has been in the discussions that I've had.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Further discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. The budget has passed. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
B is ordinance number fourteen dash six-six-six, authorizing a one percent cost of living adjustment COLA to all eligible employees of the City of Huntsville effective October first, two thousand fourteen. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshewski. Discussion? Discussion on the COLA. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It passes. Council members, with your permission, I'd like to take fifteen double B and fifteen double C out of order. They are dealing with the capital plan. Fifteen double B. Fifteen double B is a resolution to approve the City of Huntsville nineteen ninety capital improvement plan for two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-four. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Taylor, could you discuss this, please?
Yes. Council members, you just approved the budget, which includes the authorized spending for the next fiscal year. The capital improvement plan is the ten-year document that's required to show what the city's goals are with respect to capital projects as they're listed in that plan over the next ten years. So, this is for the nineteen ninety plan, the one that's been around for twenty-four years. And so, you're really establishing, not budgets for this, but expressing the city's intention with respect to all of its capital planning.
And could you just mention some of the highlights for those that didn't watch the meeting last night?
Yeah. The mayor touched on this already. It does include in this nineteen ninety plan a significant amount of funding for drainage improvements throughout the city. It also has money for recreation and new community projects, things that we've talked about, a new natatorium, open space acquisition. John Hunt Park improvements are funded on an annual basis. Expansion of Merrimack Park is funded for most of the ten years of the plan. We have projects related to public libraries, the tennis center expansion, corridor redevelopment that the mayor mentioned, improving some facility critical systems at the Von Braun Center, and also fleet capital is something that's very needed in our budget, and this will allow three million dollars to be spent on that.
Thank you. Mayor?
Mr. President, I might mention that it is a total projects of twenty-four million, seven hundred and nine thousand. These are mainly projects that have been in the plan for, many of them for the past ten years, and slowly but surely, they have moved towards to time when we had our spend plan so that we would spend that amount. Many of them have finally gotten to fruition. It's time to spend that money, and that's this year's budget is twenty-four million. And throughout the term of it, it goes all the way up to thirty-seven million at some point and all the way down to fifteen million. It varies as money is available, and as the projects hit, it varies.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. President, I guess one highlight, and I know we all like talking about them, especially me, I guess, road resurfacing from all the accounts is going up. Every year, it's up over four million dollars annually. So, that's a, that's a real good thing, combining all the resurfacing account resources.
That is, that is good. Anything else? Call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're going to take fifteen double C out of order. Fifteen double C is a resolution to approve the City of Huntsville two thousand fourteen capital improvement plan from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-four. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshewski. Mr. Taylor, could you explain this and tell us why we have two capital plans?
Yes. Council members, like the other plan, the city has a document that expresses what its intentions are with respect to long-term infrastructure development and supporting the city in a variety of other ways. This new plan was established in the early part of this year, and that is being funded exclusively by the new one percent sales and use tax. So, this is the plan that's providing the funding for our share of the Restore Our Roads program that the state has with the, what the city has with the state of Alabama. And then it also funds a variety of other road and economic development projects. That's what this plan exclusively consists of. So, all of it's being paid for with our new tax revenue. And then it will fund mostly the Restore Our Roads program from two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen. And then there's a lot of other city capital road projects in there after that, but also stuff that we will commence now as well in the next couple of years.
So, Mr. Taylor, if a citizen wants to see where that new one cent sales tax goes to, they can just, they can just find this budget on our website, and they can see what all the projects have.
That's correct. When the budget, when we produce our final budget document, it'll have two plans in it, and the plans will list every one of the projects that is being funded with this.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, could you come to the microphone, please? Mr. Davis, could you hit the highlights of the two thousand fourteen capital improvement plan?
Yes. Yes, sir. As Finance Director Randy Taylor stated, the two thousand fourteen plan consists mainly of roads and economic development. To give a balance of the nineteen ninety plan and the two thousand fourteen plan, the two thousand fourteen plan is primarily all roads. So, you, if you look back at the roads that we've had slated for the next ten years of last year's capital plan, we now have adequately funded through this one cent sales tax. They're now in the two thousand fourteen plan, fully funded. In addition to that, there's five new projects that total two hundred and fifty million dollars. It's the Aldott fifty-fifty agreement. So, the majority of that, that one cent that you passed earlier this year is going to fund those two hundred and fifty million dollars worth road projects. In two thousand nineteen will be our last funding agreement with Aldott, and then we will be heavy on localized streets. The cap plan right now has the current roads in it from last year's budget that we can adequately fund. So, as we start paying that and we start having a better realization of the tax coming in off that, we will be adding much more new localized road projects. And the remaining balance, that's for economic development. That's for job growth, helping with bringing, you know, future retail or development into the city, but primarily for recruiting more jobs like we've had with Boeing, Remington, G Intelligent platforms of bringing job opportunity to our citizens.
When will citizens start seeing the impact of this tax? When will some of the construction projects actually start?
Well, the first state project has been let, has been awarded at seventy-two East. That project, you should see construction start within the next thirty to forty-five days. That's from seventy-two East, from Chapman Mountain to Shields Road. The South Parkway overpasses bid in March, and then the Northway Parkway overpass bids later towards the end of the year. So, we probably won't see that till two thousand sixteen actual construction. But probably summer of next year, you'll see heavy construction in South Parkway. All five projects are under design in some fashion. Highway seventy-two West, they've already had public hearings last week for the public to review those plans. They're marching forward with those. So, everything's on track and on schedule as we promised the public when we passed the plan.
Thank you. Questions or further discussion?
I guess just one request with Mr. Taylor. If you could, once the budgets are placed on the internet, could, on the city website, could we get Ms. Grimcher to put out a release so that the public would know or the media would pick it up and let the public know about this being available for the public?
I'm sure we can do that.
Maybe the city hall TV channel, too.
Give us a week to get it on there, and we'll move as quickly as we can.
It may take a little longer, but we'll get it.
We'll do it on Mr. Taylor's schedule.
Hey, he wasn't joking. I'm just the token finance chairman. I.
Okay. We're discussing fifteen double Cs. Further discussion? Call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Mr. President, if I could say this, to Mr. Taylor, to Mr. Davis, and to Mr. Hamilton, y'all have done a marvelous job with this. You pulled together a budget I think we can all be proud of, and thank you for all your hard work. These are guys that you can trust, and we appreciate the trust that the council shows in them. Thank you.
Well said, Mayor. We're now at thirteen C, ordinance number fourteen dash six-eight-one concerning the annexation of land on the south side of Parsons Road and east of Hobbs Island Road. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshewski. Discussion. Ms. Nichols, will you explain this, please?
The proposed annexation is approximately point six-one acres. It's located on the south side of Parsons Road and east of Hobbs Island Road. The property is currently in use as a single-family detached dwelling, and the property owner would like to request annexation for city services.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is a resolution number fourteen dash six-eight-two, electing out of the Alabama Tax Tribunal. This was introduced September eleventh, two thousand fourteen. The chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion?
Yes. Could we get an explanation again, similar to what we had the last meeting?
Sure. If Mr. Taylor would please come back? Mr. Taylor, could you again explain why we're opting, electing out of the Alabama Tax Tribunal?
Yes, sir. The state established a new process by which taxpayers can appeal tax matters that they have with the city. We've explained to you before that if the city ever believes a taxpayer owes additional tax to the city, then they have two rights of appeal. The first appeal is always with the city, and then there is a final appeal that they have the opportunity to make, and that's currently done locally in the city. Each local government would hear those cases locally by an independent hearing officer, and that independent hearing officer's decision is binding with respect to whatever the matter is. The state established a new process whereby the state and all local governments will now have these final appeals heard through a single system. And all local governments have the opportunity to participate in that. That is a good thing for the taxpayers. It makes it more efficient. It makes it a single entity that handles those matters. We have had very few final appeals in the city's history. We try to work those things out before they get to that state. But that does not cover, the Alabama Trox Tribunal does not cover all of the taxes that the city levies. And in the cases that we have had final appeals, the taxes in question would not have been covered by the tribunal anyway. But one of the taxes that the taxpayer had, it would have been a split issue, so that it would have been dealing with the state system for one tax, and then we would still have to have a local independent hearing to handle the other part of it. So, that would not be efficient. And so, for the time being, since we don't have very many hearings, we've decided that it's in our local best interest and for the taxpayers, too, that we continue to do what we're doing. If circumstances change, we can always participate in the tax tribunal going forward. So, there's other things that are part of the new state process, and we will avail ourselves, we'll be complied to work with the new commission in that regard. But for purposes of hearings, we just don't think it's going to work for us right now.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have two new business items for introduction. Fourteen A is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land west of Zert Road and on the east side of Arnett Road. B is an introduction of an ordinance to amend Article Two, Sections nine, thirty-six, nine, forty-four, and nine, fifty of Chapter Nine, Cemeteries of the Code of Ordinances. Ms. McKee, would you mind going to the microphone and explaining what that is?
Yes, sir, counsel. These are three different amendments that are going to be made. And the first one has to do with actually Block Thirty-six in Maple Hill and Block Nine in Northside. And these are spaces that are given to those who lose their lives while serving on foreign soil in the United States Armed Forces. Currently, what we have is a hundred and eight spaces have been given, but only fifty-seven spaces have been used. And so, what we're seeing with the families is that they, it's a young soldier that passes away. They're buried here at Maple Hill or Northside, and then six spaces are given to that family. The spaces are never used. So, we want to change the ordinance and make it two spaces for the family, the person who passed away that served in the military, and then a remaining family member could also be buried. We just don't feel like that's a good way to use our spaces, and that for years and years to come, anyone who dies on foreign soil while serving in the military would then have a space here for Huntsvillians. That's the first one.
Okay.
The second amendment is to do with the cemetery service fees. And it's been since two thousand and one that we have not adjusted an increase in the service fees. Those fees would be interment of caskets, they'd be disinterment, all the fees that we currently have that are in the ordinance. And it would also have to do with the marker foundations, property transfer fees. We have a new fee that we're going to be adding to this. It's called a vacancy burial fee. And what that is, especially in Maple Hill, we have, you know, it's eighteen hundreds. So, we have some property there, and members of the family will come back and say, we have claim to this property, and they can prove their lynchage all the way back. And when they do that, we still have a property where we don't know for sure whether someone was buried there or not. And we're asking that if it has to be dug, there is going to be some sort of a fee to that, two hundred dollars, to dig that, to make sure that that property is not occupied. Because certainly, if they prove that they do own this property, then they could sell it, and then a person that buys it would have trouble later on. We, since we haven't had an increase in all these years, it's costing the city a tremendous amount of money to do that, to take care of the cemeteries. And when I started looking at this, I got advice from Mr. Hamilton, and I asked him if I could have our auditor, our city auditor, do an audit. She did an independent audit, and she is here tonight, if you'd like to ask her any questions, on, you know, what all the other cemeteries, not only in the area, but other Madison and Mobile and, and all the other municipalities that have cemeteries like we do, what do they charge? So, how we came up with what we would actually be increasing to is we said, okay, we're going to do an average of all these people that she audited. And that's what we have done with the fees that we currently are looking at. Then the last, but not least, is we are asking the council, currently it's eighteen hundred dollars to buy a lot, when we have very few lots left at this time. But as you know, we are going to be having more lots in the next six to eight months. And we are asking the council to allow us to charge twenty-five hundred dollars a lot. And that is certainly in keeping with those here in Valhalla and other spaces that are being sold at Memorial Gardens and different places in town. So, those are the three different amendments that we'd like to bring before you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling.
Ms. McKee, I understand what you're talking about, what you want to do on the first one, and making it more efficient so you don't have unused lots and everything. But I have concern about, I know we all do, about, you know, a veteran or, you know, dying, giving their life, the ultimate sacrifice on a foreign soil. If there happens to be a cir- If there happens to be a circumstance where, you know, family members, more than one family member, would want to be buried, is there some way, some leeway, or maybe some set aside of lots could be kept where a couple of these could work out?
Currently, if we draft the ordinance the way it is, it would only be two. And what we're seeing, Mr. Kling, we're not seeing very many people come back. In fact, we had two people contact us this week and said, you know, "We've still got lots there. We don't ever intend to be buried there. Please give them back to those that might use this."
I understand that.
You know, if only half of them haven't been used, it would be very hard to say we would do it for some and not for others. And we've looked all over the nation and found that this is primarily what most cemeteries are doing, offering to, military.
I just hate for us to do anything that would even be perceived that we're kind of cutting back on what we're, you know, doing for those folks.
Actually, I did talk with the veterans group, several of the veterans group, and none of them had a problem with it. They all were in agreement of the groups that I spoke to, that, you know, this was fair, and they hated to see lots, because now, we have people that were in the Korean War, and so those lots, we can never recover them, and they're just going to always be empty.
Is there any way, some sort of a time limitation? I don't know, after, I don't know, I'm just pulling rabbits out of my hat, I guess, but after so many years...
Mr. Kling, if I could, I think that what we'll find is that the policy that she's proposing would make us more consistent with the manner in which the national cemeteries are managed, but what I'd like to do is take the opportunity to confirm what I'm saying is accurate, and come back to you prior to your vote, which will be at the next council meeting.
Just throwing it out, if you happen to see some creative way that we could do kind of what I'm talking about, where there could be some set aside lots if they're requested, you know, maybe something could be done, but I guess I just want to make sure we look at every option, we're not cutting back on those folks.
Thank you. We're now at 15 new business items for consideration or action. We have already approved 15 double B and 15 double C. Are there items you'd like to hold, council members? Chair holds 15 E, 15 Z, and 15 double A. Are there any other items? 15 A is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and U.S. Department of Justice for the fiscal year 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. B is a request for authorization to advertise and fill vacant equipment, service, worker position at higher than minimum salary in the Fleet Service Division if necessary. C is ordinance to amend budget orders number 13-630 by changing appropriating funding within various departments and funds. D is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. F is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a financial advisory services agreement with Public Financial Management, Inc. G is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number one to the original office lease agreement, resolution number 13 dash 127, dated February 14, 2013, between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Utilities for the purchase of amending to allow for an early termination of the lease. H is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for cooperative maintenance of public right-of-way for the existing service road and the state right-of-way along U.S. Highway 72 from mile post 90.730 to mile post 97.30, and to maintain 46 LF of slotted drainpipe, project number 6514 SP55. I is a resolution authorizing city council to amend the contract with Reed Contracting Services, Inc. for north-south connector road, base bid and open option 1 and 2, project number 6511 RD01 by change order number 1. J is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with A&amp;S Appraisal Company, LLC for appraisal services for Zert Road improvement, state project number STPHV-8507 and 6506 RD01. K is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, Inc. for engineering design services for wind drive relocation, project number 6514 RD02 by modification number 1. L is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with OMI, Inc. for construction materials testing services for Research Park Lake 5 Expansion, project number 6514 DR02. M is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with Garber, LLC for engineering and land surveying services for Research Park Lake 5 Expansion, project number 6514 DR02. N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to modify agreement with Johnson and Johnson Associates Consulting Engineers, LLC for engineering design and construction administration services for Carmichael Park, project number 6512 DM25 by modification number 4. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with Interlink Mortgage Service, LLC as a participating lender for the down payment assistance program. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement between the City of Huntsville and Family Services Center, Inc. for housing counseling program. Q is a resolution authorizing mayor to approve and submit the 2013 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. R is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify contract 13439 with Family Services, Inc. to change property address. S is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify contract 13440 with Family Services, Inc. to change property address. T is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of zoning enforcement coordinator at higher than minimum salary if necessary. U is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Huntsville Madison County Mental Health Center to provide public transit services by modification number 1. V is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the City of Madison to provide dispatching and scheduling services for the Mars Program. W is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Board of Trustees of the University of Alabama Huntsville to provide public transit services. X is a resolution concerning five-year extension of right-of-way use agreement, ordinance number 09665 sub A with MediaCom Southeast LLC. Y is an ordinance dedicating right-of-way and utility and drainage systems for massive lake improvements. The chair would like to hold 15 G as well. So, we're holding 15 E, G, Z, and double A. Chair moves to consolidation approval of 15 A through D, 15 F, 15 H through Y.
Second.
We have motion for consolidation approval, second by Ms. Kling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. E is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement with Beeson and Alley, Inc. for the fiscal year 2014 independent audit. Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second? Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Mr. Oshewski. Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor, I have questions about hiring Beeson and Alley for the independent audit. How long have we used Beeson and Alley?
It's been a very long time, Councilman, all 15 years we've been here, that I've been here, and goes back before that. They, we choose them, one, because they have a long-term relationship with us, and they know a lot about us, which is very important when you're auditing. We have had other firms express interest in it, but we are very pleased with the services they provide, with the cost at which they provide them. The fee that is represented in the contract you have, they reduced that 10% during the recession in our request, and they've kept it at that level ever since. So, again, we've, they do a professional job. They're one of the premier firms, and we're satisfied with the work they do and want to continue.
And I'm certainly pleased with Beeson Alley, and think they do a great job. My concern is, using the same auditor for many, many years, is that the best practice?
I understand your question. We, of course, their professional standards are such that they have to cover all the bases, just like any firm would. There are people that suggest that you rotate on a regular basis, and there are some that stay with their auditors for a long time. I think most do have a longer-term relationship. So, that's, we don't doubt that they, their quality of their work is any less because they have been our auditor for a long time. We think it's better.
And do they send different people to come look at our books, or is it the same person every time?
They have some rotation. The management team has been the same for a while, but they've had a number of different auditors that are involved here over the course of many years.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 15 G is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number one to the original office lease agreement, resolution number 13 dash 127, dated February 14, 2013, between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Utilities for the purpose of amending to allow for an early termination of the lease. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. Mr. Oshewski, do you wish to recuse yourself in abstaining from the floor?
I mean, I've seen this. It's really a no-brainer, but I don't, I shouldn't be voting on this.
Mr. President, I'd move to postpone for the next regular council meeting. I'll withdraw my motion if anybody was going to get ready to say anything.
I think that's fine. We can hold it till the next council meeting when we have full council members here.
Yep. Okay, and Mr. Jofron, obviously, we don't have, I can't vote on it, so we'll just maybe automatically come up at the next council meeting if we take no action?
You can't vote on it?
We only have three members. One can't participate in this issue, so only have two that can possibly vote?
Well, he could vote on a motion to postpone without risking any, any, any issue. It's not, it's not an affirmative vote on a substantive issue, it's just a procedural vote. So, there wouldn't be a problem with him voting on a motion to postpone, but if it, it could be, it could be, if for some reason he didn't vote on the motion to postpone, it could just be placed on the next council agenda anyway.
Okay. I feel more comfortable, we're just going to place it on the next council agenda?
That's fine.
And for council's knowledge, it's $150,000 a year, five years, there's an early termination on it, so that if we ever found funding for, to bring all those services together in a new building, we would be able to get out of the lease at that time, but I think we'll probably be there five years.
Z is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a First Amendment to nonrecourse promissory note between the City of Huntsville and Low Mill Capital, LLC.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Kling. Second by Mr. Oshewski. Mr. Jofron, could you explain this, please?
Members of the council, Z and double A are both related, and they are in connection with the Mirabu housing, multifamily housing development and the transfer of ownership regarding that development. As you may recall, we entered into an agreement with Dave Greenberg and Low Mill Capital, LLC some time ago, to hopefully, over a period of time, effect an ultimate transfer of the interest in Mirabu from the current owner to Mr. Greenberg. The city at the time assigned whatever interest we had in a promissory note that we had to, that we had to pay on behalf of Cadence Bank, and since that time, Mr. Greenberg has been working with the current owner on a purchase and sale scenario. They entered into an agreement for the purchase and sale of the property in July of this year. As conditions to that sale, the current owner asked the City of Huntsville to enter into mutual release, whereby the city would release the current owner from any potential obligations he may have, and he would release the City of Huntsville from any potential obligations we may have to each other relative to outstanding promissory notes, loans, or potential responsibility to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. I know it's kind of a complicated morass of issues, but the, well, the release is the second item. The first item is the, is the promissory note, an amendment to a promissory note that we, that the city council had approved earlier for Mr. Greenberg and Low Mill Capital, Inc. in the amount of $200,000. This increases that promissory note to $350,000, so an increase of $150,000. This note will be paid back, and it's to cover additional expenses that have been incurred since the date of that original transaction. Happy to answer any questions. I know there was a lot of information.
I guess my question is, why do we do this?
Well, I had hoped to have answered part of that in my explanation.
Yeah, I didn't like doing it before, and I still don't understand why we do it, but go ahead, try to convince me.
Mr. President, I'm like you, you know, we all ask ourselves why we do it. We want to get out of this. This has been the longest, this has been since 1992 that some of this process has been working through the city, and our, our job is to get it behind us so we can move forward and get those residential units back to serving the purpose of what they're supposed to serve, which is being apartments that are decent in the City of Huntsville. Our hope is that Mr. Greenberg can do that. We, we don't think that the present owner can do that, and if we don't move to that stage, we will never be able to rehab those apartments and to move forward with that project. It is not the best thing that we could, best outcome we could have, but it's the only outcome that we have available right now.
And Mr. President, more specifically with regard to the amount of money, there have been expenses such as property taxes for the past, not two, but three years now, for the property, and those are in excess of $50,000 a year just for the property taxes. And there have been a number of legal expenses that the city would have had to have incurred if we had retained ownership of the promissory note and sought to enforce our rights under that note that we paid off to Cadence Bank. So, the proposed purchaser has assumed obligations that the City of Huntsville would have had to pay, and is using the monies under the promissory note to satisfy those obligations.
And then he will pay back the City of Huntsville?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Greenberg has a, has a good track record as a developer, and locally, I believe he had worked with Phil Dotz, you know, who we all know, either had worked with him or Phil was familiar with his work. And one of the projects that he had done is the Russellers Glen Hotel Apartments, which that was an old hotel that was sitting there for a while, and he developed it. It's a positive for downtown, and it's a positive for the senior citizen community of Huntsville, and hopefully, he can work that magic on this property, too.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Double A is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a mutual release agreement among the City of Huntsville, Mirabu gated community LP, and Gary M. Reynolds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Oshewski. Mr. Jofron, why do we want to do this? Usually, in my experience, you don't want to give a mutual release to somebody that has done you wrong and you don't trust. Why would you want to do that?
Well, the bulk, the bulk of, or the essence of this release that he has requested is in connection with whatever responsibility the city might ultimately have to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. As you may know, we have some unresolved issues with HUD with regard to some program monies that were used for this property over the past 10 years, actually 20 years, some of which did not involve the current owner at all, preceded him by some 10 years. He does not want to be responsible for any of those obligations. I'm not sure that he ever would be, but if the city is ultimately responsible to pay back monies to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, he doesn't want the city to then attempt to come after him and pursue some sort of reimbursement, because the Department of Housing and Urban Development has determined that some of those program funds were either ineligible or not properly documented.
So, that would be the city's fault if that happened?
That's correct.
And he, okay.
That's correct.
So, we're not going to pay for anything that was his fault?
That's correct.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 16 legal department items. We have one vacation of easement and a gas line easement deed for acceptance. Chair moves for consolidation approval.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at non-roster communications from the public. Mr. Cox, you state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Jerry Cox, 4029 Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. After taking flak from my good friend, the Colonel, and several outside here, as I spoke last council meeting, we are now 13 years since the event of 9/11, and we're 13 years of still having soldiers dying in Afghanistan. So, since our last meeting, we had three more soldiers, three more military personnel to die in Afghanistan. One United States Marine, one United States Army Soldier, and one United States Navy Sailor. So, and now, we're going to war again in Iraq, and we're going to war in other countries. I hope I'm not here reporting on military deaths in those countries. Finally, Mr. President, I hope that there are two items not in the capital improvement plan. The first one is the bridge to Nowhere that is proposed on Church Street, just west of this building. And the second is the purchase of residential property for sports fields adjacent to the soon-to-close McDonnell Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council?
Mr. President, I'm just thankful that the budget will be placed on line... Mr. President, I'm just thankful that the budget will be placed online where the community can access it. I'm still concerned about the one cent sales tax. I do understand when the mayor was asking the city to vote for it, that 125 million, 25 million per year for five years, would go to the state for the roads, and that's a good thing. And the other nine million, the mayor estimated it would be about 34 million, I think it's been said since there's more, which would leave nine million at least for, Mr. Taylor was just saying the various things, 250 million for roads, that that include that 125 coming out of that sales tax and another 125 coming out of it? I know we pay that off in five years, okay, and then, so we will have 34-plus million dollars a year. There's economic development to draw industry into the city, and that's a good thing. But I'm not sure that I've heard anything about development in North Huntsville. So, I was wondering if the projected growth activity would be online and accessible to the community members?
Yes, all the projects will be online, they'll be listed out, and additionally, we vote in every public meeting on the projects, so you will see the contracts all on our agenda and you'll obviously be here if you want to when we vote.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Welcome back, Ms. Reed. Thank you, I moved sides, maybe I'd be a better person over here. I doubt it, but anyway.
She's almost far right.
I was the only person at the budget hearing last night. I'm very sad that everybody in this city don't get interested. I agree with you, Mr. O'Shevsky, we should have found some money for PsychQuest, that's an educational system for the children, for the people, for everything. Can't believe you couldn't get a second up here and nobody took interest in it. I'm very, very sad, they should have found some money. You know, we find money in this city for anything we want to. When you sit up there and you say, "economic development, and these developments and all these properties need to be done, we gave eight million to wholesale, we cannot buy these businesses into this city. We cannot take new money." And I didn't want to know tonight, are we going to borrow more money? I heard we may be borrowing 70 million. I hope we don't borrow no more money, please. We cannot buy these businesses into this city. And if these developers wants their businesses and their property fixed up, grow up an ordinance up there and make them fix up their properties like you do our houses. What's going on right here? Common sense? My son looked up common sense the other night on an iPad. It's not in a computer and it's not on a telephone. Get some common sense into this government and find out what common sense mean. I mean, I just don't think economic development is buying these businesses. And I heard that a small business downtown asked for a little help the other day, he was told he couldn't have any help, we don't do that. We do anything we want to for anybody. I'm not through with Stone, and Gary Reynolds here stole, he stole this city money, you released him tonight. I heard he's out of the country. He left the country. First, I thought you all had a lawsuit on him. He took money from Auburn Clings District to build those Malibu Apartments, that was going to be a big deal. And then, all of a sudden, he couldn't even pay the taxes on it. We trust these people. Why don't you take community development money and go in the neighborhoods, let's help these poor folks fix up their own homes instead of building one or two brand-new houses out there and let a big developer take all the money and run with it and feel good about it? I mean, common sense. Gary Reynolds is still in the country, does anybody know? You released him tonight. I heard you had a lawsuit on him. You know where I get all my information? From the public, employees, and the people, and the teachers. They fill me full of it and it keeps me up at night. Hey, if I want to know more about Gary Reynolds, I want to know all about Stone School, I'm not through with Stone School over there. That was tore down because of the connection in this city. My contract says four acres that we bought.
Ms. Reed.
Now, we're tearing it down to development for Randy Scrimshaw. Thank you, I love you, have a good weekend, find more out details about that.
Your time's up.
Gary Reynolds, Stone School.
Ms. Reed, your time's up.
Thank you, good night.
Mr. Kling.
Just to clarify, all of Stone is not being torn up, only approximately 10% of it and it's part of the development plan. And again, I think it's a very good project for West Huntsville.
If you would, please introduce yourself and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ruben Cable, excuse me. Address is 616 Royal Oaks Drive. I'm here on behalf of my mother. I'm trying to find out and see if the city has any kind of programs or provisions or something. She is 80 years old, she lives by herself, and she's on dialysis. I live out of state and I try to take care of my mom, my daughter helps out. She had a hole to pop open in her yard. I fell through this hole. She had actually stepped on this spot where this hole was, but the hole didn't open up. She weighs less than 100 pounds. I came back to my car to get her items out and when I did, it was just like a millisecond, I was in this hole. I had two guys from the city, I called the city to try to see if we can get some kind of help for her, and they came out and looked at this hole. If this hole had opened up, I'd have been gone. If it had opened up on her, she'd have been gone. As small as she is, that hole was big enough for her to fall through. They measured, it was over 17 and a half feet deep, with four feet of water or more in it. So, either one of us could have been gone. I'm trying to get some help for her. She's in the hospital right now. I just got into town. I have dual residence, part of my residence is in Indiana because of my wife's job, and we are from Huntsville, we have a house here. I used to teach school here. I used to work at Stone. I love Stone, I hate that it's gone. That was my home. It just saddens me that my mom has got to sit up here in the hospital and worry about if her house is going to fall through. You hear people's houses falling in Florida? She's got one that's probably going to fall through. She's had another hole that developed on the other side, this is her driveway. She had a big cactus that's in her yard. When the guys came out to look at the house, the hole, the guy dropped his lighter, his flashlight down there, he had to come back the next day to get it. It was still floating in the water, still on. She had this cactus that's been there for over 30-some years. Half of it fell over in the yard, we don't even know why. And she had a hole that opened up when I was in high school, about almost 35 or 40 years ago. That hole was so wide you could put a truck in it, it was 20 feet deep. The city came out and filled it up twice. I'm looking for some help. If anybody can help me, because I do not want my mother decide that she wants to walk across her yard and her yard is sinking. She's got holes that are opening up, little small holes, and I just don't want her to walk out in this yard and she falls through and I don't have my mom anymore. So, I'm looking for some help.
Okay, we're not sure how we can help, it's private property, we'll find out. Shane Davis, could you just get the address from this gentleman and see, if you'll talk to Mr. Davis right here and give him your address?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Johnson?
TC Johnson, 1800 Spark. Back to the earlier question, and I appreciate Councilman Kling for all he said, my question was, the relationship between the city and the private owner, are taxpayers' dollars, or how is that working? I suppose it'd be a private owner and the city on the same territory, we are clearing it, or it appears that we are clearing it. Is the people, private owners, are they going to be paying some for the clearance as well? And not just, I mean, I'm just getting down to the specifics of how this works. It seems when I buy property, it becomes my job to do what I need to do, to put what I need to put on it. The other people, the city doesn't do anything for it. And so, a little transparency, because I'm looking at these names that I'm seeing on this appraisal, I see Scrimshaw in the Capella case, I see Fannins, and I was told that the property was decreasing based on a market problem. You told me $350,000 they were spending every year for upkeep. If they're spending $350,000 for upkeep, why is it so dilapidated? I'm just trying to get some understanding of what the city is paying, or is it a mixed deal between the city and the private owner for getting the property ready? I know you understand my question, I just want to know that little bit. The names involved are suspect, because every time I see something about land, I see the same name, Scrimshaw, Fannins, appraisal, I see Fannin. I was here when we sold, bought the mission. And I'm still not clear on how that went with the city. The city then, under former administration, bought the mission over here and told us the road was going to be built, blah, 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 blah. And then, the appraisal, Westminster went up so the mission could move, it's in a better spot, I said that then, but I thought it should have been their money. And so, I need some clarity, Mr., from someone, on if we're doing all this work with city truck and city labor and city taxes, what are the business partners, the independent business partners paying for that? Or how does that work?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling, you want to try again?
I'll take a shot at it. As I understand it, there is, the demolition that's going on is approximately, again, roughly approximately 10%. It's part of, the city is doing in-kind work for the city's school system. The school system has some things that they'll be doing, you know, for the city, so it's intergovernmental cooperation. I'm assuming that, I guess, the agreement that the school system has is that the property will be in a certain condition when it's, you know, when they close or when they do their deal. But the city's dealing with the school system. And again, everything I've seen, it's, you know, I think it's a positive for that area and, you know, it's taken a blighted area. The $350,000, that was a figure, ballpark that was given to us, and it deals with security, personnel being on the premises, utilities being turned on, so I guess basically you're talking about, you know, maintenance items, you know, things you have to do to maintain it. Has nothing to do with capital upkeep or, you know, repairs. It's just the utility bill and some personnel cost, I guess, as far as patrolling over in that area at night or whatever they have to do to secure the area. That's, I'm not on the school board, I may not know everything, I'm just telling you what I know the best I can.
Mr. President?
Mr. Joffran?
If I can add a little more clarity. Pastor Johnson, there were basically two purchase agreements involved in this transaction with the school board. One involved a private individual and the other involved the City of Huntsville. So, the City of Huntsville is purchasing approximately four acres from the school board at this location. That purchase price was discounted by an approximate value commensurate with what it cost for the city to demolish a portion of the building. In the school board's agreement with the private individual, that agreement required that that portion of the building be demolished before he would purchase it. So, the value, from a value standpoint, the city received a discount in the purchase price commensurate with what it cost to demolish that portion of the building. And then, whatever arrangement the school board had with the private individual really is between them, but I do know that that agreement required the building to be demolished and that spot cleared.
Would anyone else, ma'am, would you like to address the council?
He ain't going to let me ask.
My name is Carol Cottney and I sleep at 305 Seminole Drive, that's the Salvation Army Emergency Shelter, where I've been since January 23, 2013. I've been homeless since December of 2008. I have a bunch of college degrees, a bunch of experience, I've lived in this town for 57 years. My big beef or concern is that 21% of our population that makes less than 15,000 a year. It is cheaper to hire a person at minimum wage for 52 weeks at 40 hours a week than it is to buy a brand-new car or to send a student to Randolph High School. Currently, it's very frustrating that when somebody is willing to donate the money so I can purchase a monthly pass to go out to the Alabama Career Center and to go to interviews, I can't accept the job because the bus doesn't go to where the jobs are and they don't run on the weekend. There are a lot of people sleeping in these human warehouses in this town, and it's affecting the west side, I mean, you've got public housing. Matter of fact, the new prices on the apartments for public housing are higher than prices in the private sector. If a person currently residing in Huntsville Housing Authority Apartments can afford to pay that rent, they can afford not to live in public housing. Also, a person in a wheelchair on the eighth floor of a tower, if there's a major fire, they're going to die. Anyway, I'm concerned about public transportation. You guys paid for a company out of Seattle to come in here and they've got a price, extend it to seven or eight o'clock at night, extend it on Saturday, maybe even Sundays so people can go to church. We need an industrial loop. We have all this stuff along the edges, even in all this City of Huntsville stuff, only 40% of the people that reside in the City of Huntsville actually work here? We've got people who want to work, we've got people who want to be able to apply for a job and go to that job. One of the questions in an interview, "do you have reliable transportation?" My feet, you know, how many of you are going to walk seven or eight hours and stand on your feet? Bunch of you guys, I've got more education than you do, and, you know, well, I'm going to give you a minimum wage job. I've taken all kinds of jobs. We need public transportation, what'd you say, $60,000 per mile? It is cheaper to expand and develop public transportation than it is to make more four and eight-lane roads with people with jobs. It'll decrease government spending.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Okay.
What do anyone else like to address the council? Word, Joan.